Okay, we're live on YouTube now.
Okay, good morning. Welcome to the March 16th, 2021 Public Hearing, Public Meeting of the New York City Landmarks Preservation Commission. I will call the roll. Chair Carroll.
Here.
Commissioner Bland. Commissioner Shamir Baron.
Here.
Commissioner Chapin.
Here.
Commissioner Chen.
Yeah.
Commissioner Devonshire.
Here.
I take this slush off, it's unmuted, right?
Commissioner Goldblum.
Here.
Commissioner Gustafson.
Yep.
Commissioner Jefferson.
Here.
Commissioner Lutti. Commissioner Holford Smith.
Here.
Okay, we're all set.
All right, good morning and welcome to the March 16th Public Hearing and Public Meeting of the Landmarks Preservation Commission. Today, we will start the agenda with our Public Hearing Agenda, and that will be followed by a couple of public meeting items. And this meeting is being held via Zoom and livestreamed on our YouTube channel. So if you would like to watch the proceedings, please visit our YouTube channel to watch the livestream. If you would like to testify on any of the hearing items, please join the meeting at the estimated time for that item as it's shown on our hearing agenda, which can be found on our website. And with that, I will turn it over to the Director of Preservation, Corey Harala, to lead us through our agenda today.
Hey, thank you, Sarah, and good morning, everyone. We'll start today's public hearing with Agenda Item Number One, LPC 21-04396, An Application for a Certificate of Appropriateness in the Borough of Manhattan, Block 214, Lot 3, 401 Greenwich Street in the Trebekka West Historic District. This is a commercial building designed by Gertler and Wentz Architects and built in 2001, and the application is to alter the facade and install signage.
Commissioners, the applicants have joined the hearing. You now have control of the presentation. Please click to activate it, set your name for the record, and unmute, and you may begin.
Good morning, Corey. Good morning, Commissioners and other members of the Landmark Preservations Committee. My name is Terry Oved, here on behalf of the building located at 401 Greenwich Street. Joining me today is Mr. Fadi Riscalla and Mr. Rami Isaac. Before we begin, we would like to thank Ms. Michelle Shabrami and Bernadette Artis for their invaluable assistance throughout this process, as well as with assisting us in coordinating this hearing. Our application will be presented by Mr. Riscalla, to whom I now turn over the mic. Take it away, Fadi.
Good morning. I just want to make sure that the presentation is up on the screen. It says 401 Greenwich Street. My name is Fadi Riscalla, and I'll be presenting the following proposed facade improvement to 401 Greenwich Street. To the left, you see our existing building facade with the tile glazing and window frames, and to the right, the close-up of the ground-level storefront. This is a quick overview of the proposed facade. The rendered image you see here shows the color of the proposed material darker than reality. You will see in the coming slides a more accurate depiction of the actual material. In the next few slides, I will zoom in on different sections of the building. Again, this is existing condition, showing adjacent building to our north. And this is the proposed showing painted building elements and window frames, cladding of the tile glazing, and an added architectural frame detail. Here, we have a close-up of the existing midsection of the building. And here are the proposed changes to that section. Here, we are focusing on the ground-level storefront, where we will be addressing the following: lack of hierarchy between the three different entrance doors, the visibility of the interior exit signs, the unnecessary prominence of the service door at the far left, and unbecoming faucet decal at the front door. And here's the ground level after improvement. Specifically, you'll notice that the service door has been concealed, exit signs have been blocked, and architectural framing detail introduced around the building entrance to emphasize and define the main door. The decal has been removed, and we integrated the intercom and the street address into the proposed frame. These changes present a simpler aesthetic with focused attention. Here, we have the same view but from a different angle, showing the street address cut out in the proposed frame around the main door with inner concealed light. Here, we're showing in detail the two main components that we are introducing. On top is the architectural element that frames the upper part of the building with corresponding detail next to it. And below that, we have the street address cut out of the proposed frame with concealed light and the corresponding detail next to it. Following is the aluminum composite material that we are using, and this is where you see better depiction of the actual color, which is a stormy gray. The material is 4mm thick, top and bottom layers are aluminum. It's factory powder-coated, it's durable, and it requires minimal maintenance. I would like to show you as well a few examples in the immediate area on Greenwich Street where service doors were concealed, similar to what we are proposing. And the adjacent building to our north with architectural features feature projecting six inches in front of our pier. The elements we are proposing will not project beyond that point. And here are a couple of examples of nearby directories. On the left, a backlit directory with bright lights, while our street address would be very dim and not intrusive. And on the right is a directory projecting in front of building line, while our intercom and our seat address will be integrated in the design elements. That was the presentation, and thank you.
Thank you very much. Commissioners, do we have any questions for the applicant? All right, I'm not seeing any questions at this time, so we'll move to public testimony. If you're here in the meeting and would like to speak on this item, please raise your virtual hand so we can identify you. And we will begin with anyone who signed up in advance, if they did, and then get to everybody. And I will now turn it over to Lisa Kersavage, our Executive Director, to walk us through the testimony. Lisa? Okay, thank you. We had one person sign up, Kelly Carroll. Kelly, I brought you in.
There we go. Thank you, Lisa. Good morning, Kelly Carroll, Historic District's Council. The proposed changes are appropriate save for the installation of the architectural trim framing on the building's facade. This trim will cover over much of the brickwork, which should be left legible. Thank you.
And I don't see any other hands raised. Okay, thank you. Rich, do we have any written testimony?
We did receive the Manhattan Community Board of One Landmarks Subcommittee Resolution recommending approval.
Okay, thank you. All right. I think I'll turn back to the applicants now and ask if you'd like to address the comment from the Historic District's Council about the trim covering the masonry.
We respectfully disagree. It's really not covering the masonry, it's framing it. If anything, the masonry is actually more enhanced. The masonry is a lighter color, the framing is a darker color, and if anything, it will accentuate it. We purposely wanted to leave the building around, the bricks around it and the masonry around it to be highlighted, and chose this particular color to highlight it the most.
All right, Commissioners, do we have any final questions for the applicant before we move to our discussion? All right, I'm not seeing any questions, so I'm now asking to unmute each of you so that we can close the hearing and move to our discussion. Just look out for that. Oh, Commissioner Lutti, do you have a question?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify something you just said, the applicant just said. So the colors on the facade of the building, are there two tones or one tone? And what are they? Because the, you know, in your presentation, it's hard to read from slide to slide.
It is all one tone, and the only material we're using is composite, aluminum composite material, and it's all one single color.
And what color is that?
It's, they refer to it as stormy gray. It's pretty much a slight gray. But the rendering here is not very accurate. If you go to page 10, this is the most accurate depiction of it. One more, sorry, one more slide. One more, sorry. It's 11, not 10. I was confused. Yes, the stormy gray here where it says cladding, this is the actual color of the material we are using, and that's going to be throughout everything. You see gray that we're introducing.
Okay, that's great. Thank you so much for clarifying.
Okay. All right, so if there are no other questions, Commissioner Chapin, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
Motion to close the hearing.
Thank you. Commissioner Jefferson, would you second that motion?
I second the motion.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, hearing is closed, and we'll begin our discussion. And, you know, as was presented, this is a new, relatively new, 2001 Commission-approved building, and the applicant is proposing some additive features to change some of the details and add, I think, some more details to the building. And we've heard some testimony about the perimeter fin, and we heard the applicant's response. So the base building remains the same. This is, you know, really about these features, and if we can talk about them collectively, or if you want to parse them out, that's fine as well. So we'll go ahead with our discussion. Commissioner Lutti, since you had a question, would you like to start this one?
Sure. I actually feel, after all, that this project looks very good, and in every way, and it works well within the surrounding landscape. I would suggest and agree with the testimony that it would be good for the applicant to work with the staff on the perimeter fins.
Okay. All right, Commissioner Jefferson?
Yeah, this is an intriguing project, because last night, when I was looking at it, I said it's a handsome building, but the color is so powerful. I mean, it was so different from, it distracted from the volume of the building. And so I was concerned about how powerful the color was, how dominant on the facade. And today, I hear that it's actually a gray, a softer gray. So I can accept that. I can accept the color being softer and lighter, yes.
Okay, all right. And Commissioner Gustafson?
Yeah, I agree with Commissioner Lutti's comments.
Okay, and Commissioner Shamir Baron?
I can actually accept it as it's been presented. I don't really think that there really need to be any modifications.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Holford Smith?
Sorry, can you just work with?
Can you hear me? No, just, can you start over? Just let me make sure we heard the entire comment.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, sorry. I agree with Commissioner Lutti's comment regarding the working with the staff to refine the detail of the fin. I think that could be improved slightly.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Chapin?
Yes, I think in general, it's a fine proposal, and I also agree that the applicant should work with the staff on the framing of those upper windows, which looks somewhat heavy at this point in the way it meets the bricks. So that's it.
Okay. Commissioner Goldblum?
I'm okay with it as is, but I'm also okay with them working with the staff.
Okay. And Commissioner Devonshire?
I agree with Commissioner Lutti's comments.
Okay. And Commissioner Chen?
Yeah, same here. It would be great if they can work with the staff on the upper framing.
Okay. And Commissioner Bland? I think he's, he just, he had to step out. Okay, so I know that many of you think that they should work with the staff on refining that perimeter detail, and I wonder if that means pushing it to the inside of the masonry or lightening it up. Does anyone want to be a little more specific, and then we can vote it out with that modification? Commissioner Lutti, do you want to say what you were thinking on that?
I was thinking to sort of lighten it up, actually.
Okay. All right, everybody comfortable with that? Not raise your hand. Okay, all right. Commissioner Lutti, would you go ahead and make the motion? And you can just, I think, just refine the end of it to reflect what you said. Okay, great.
In the matter of docket, LPC 21-04396, 401 Greenwich Street, Trebekka West Historic District, a commercial building designed by Gertler and Wentz Architects and built in 2001. The application is to alter the facade and install signage. I note that the building was constructed in 2001. I recommend approval with modifications finding that the proposed work will not eliminate or damage any significant architectural features, that the replacement of the opaque glazing with composite metal panels at the spandrels will not alter the facade's ratio, that the alterations to the ground floor infill will feature subtle modifications, which will be well-integrated into the design and helps more clearly differentiate the primary entrance to the service entrance from the other infill, that the composite metal panels featuring a painted outer metal layer recall the character of sheet metal, a typical installation type within the Historic District, and the limited use in dark finish will help these elements to subtly reflect the modernity of the building and blend with their context without drawing undue attention to themselves. The small illuminated cutout address dunks will be simply designed with a concealed lighting source, helping the installation to be a discreet presence. And that the application of metal fins framing the window assemblies at the upper floors and the shrins at the base will add depth and articulate the facade. However, I find that the boxy form of the fins at the upper floors lacks the level of articulation typical of framing elements at buildings throughout the streetscape and Historic District, and the placement apart from the window assemblies exposed to brick in between results in an awkward composition. Therefore, I recommend that the applicant work with staff so that the profiles placement and deteriorating of the perimeter fins can be lightened up.
Thank you. Commissioner Gustafson, would you second that motion? And Rich, will you call the vote?
Chair Carroll?
Aye.
Commissioner Bland?
I think he wasn't present.
Yeah.
I'll abstain because I didn't hear it. But I am now on again. Thanks.
Commissioner Shamir Baron?
Oh.
Commissioner Chapin?
Aye.
Commissioner Chen?
Aye.
Commissioner Devonshire?
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum?
Aye.
Commissioner Gustafson?
Aye.
Commissioner Jefferson?
Aye.
Commissioner Lutti?
Aye.
And Commissioner Holford Smith?
Aye.
Okay, with ten in favor and none opposed and one abstained, the motion carries.
Great, thank you. So that's approved with the final modification to refine that detail working with the staff. So please go ahead and continue to work with your staff person, and we'll move to the next item.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
The next item is number two, LPC 21-03277, An Application for a Certificate of Appropriateness in the Borough of Manhattan, Block 229, Lot 6, 351 Canal Street in the Soho Cast Iron Historic District. Store building with neo-grec style elements designed by W.H. Gaylor and built in 1871 to 72. The application is to construct a rear addition and raise a parapet.
And Commissioners, we'll note that staff will be presenting the components of the application, and the applicants are available for questions.
Good morning, Maggie from the Precipitation Staff. I'm presenting for 351 Canal Street. This application is to construct a rear addition at the existing rear courtyard on the northeast end, and this building is located on the northeast corner of Canal Street and Worcester Street, as seen on the top right corner. The application is also for extending a portion of the parapet at the east side facade, as well as installing a metal railing. Apologize for the slice. So this page shows on the left is the 1940 tax photo on the left, and on the right is the destination photo, taken 1973 viewing from Canal Street. Next. On the top is Section AA. It is cutting through the existing courtyard in the north-south axis. You can see the plan on the bottom right, and then it shows the rear addition is this five-story at the rear yard with the basement as well, and feeling, basically feeling in the light court. And below, the row section BB cut through the existing courtyard, seeing the existing rear facade to be removed, which is on the left, this existing rear facade. And there's no historic windows or shutters. It's just some flue and some windows. And the extension is building right up to the lot line, as you can see here in these highlighted red drawings. This page shows a detailed sections looking north. So on the left is showing the existing courtyard. Here, this is the existing light well, and on the right, showing the parapet addition as well, together with this rear additions. You can see that the function is to hold staircase. And applicant Alfred Carmen, he's going to explain this further. And then on the block bottom is the plan, the detailed portion of the detailed plan. Next, this is showing the floor plan at the lower floor, which is on the top row, and then all the way from the cellar, first floor, and then the upper floor. So the addition is right at the top corner. This page shows the, sorry, let's skip this one. Yes. So these are the photos showing the existing condition. As you can see, the windows are at the existing facade, which will be removed for this rear addition, and there's no special windows nor any shutters at this facade. And it also shows the neighbor's lot line here. Next photo. So this page show the mock-up at the roof, the top left, the top right side, this aerial view highlighted in red, show the extension of the parapet on the side wall. So it's just a portion of it. You can see the red here. There's some existing parapet, which is already a little bit sort of higher, and then this portion is the extension of the parapet. Also, there are pipe railing, a little bit setback, and then also the rear addition here. This following slide, taken from the public froff fair, showing the visibility. Please ignore this here. This is a staff-level work, which has already been approved from a previous permit. And then the next photo. So this photo is taken at the junction, standing in front of Cher Street, standing along Canal. And then on the right-hand side is the Zoom. So from the Zoom, you can see the extension of the parapet. This bit sort of a little bit high is the pipe railing. Please note that the pipe railing actually need to connect from this line all the way to the white mock-up that doesn't have the orange color. So this is walking further south, along Cher Street, and then looking towards Canal Street. So you can see on the left is the true view, like showing the visibility. On the right is the zoom-in version. In the last two slides, this one shows the roof plan in detail. I want to bring your attentions also to the detail of the pipe railing. This is a section through that new parapet, the extension of the parapet, and the pipe railing. And then also highlighted in red is the extension of the parapet. And then on the floor plan and the roof plan, there is the roof level, and then also there's an elevated level for HVAC, and also where the railing is. And then on the last slide, the top left shows the viewing north from the neighboring building. So it's like the north elevation of this extension of the parapet, as well as the rear addition. And on the right here, this is like the east elevation standing from the neighbor's roof, looking towards east. The applicant, Alfred Carmen, is here to provide further explanation and answer any question. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Maggie. Mr. Carmen, did you want to add anything at this point, or just take a question?
I want to compliment Maggie. Maggie did a fantastic job. I'm speechless.
Okay, great, thank you.
Questions, I'll fill in the details. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Commissioners, do we have any questions at this time? Okay, Commissioner Chapin, please go ahead.
I just, it wasn't muted. I just had a question about, there's some various things on top of the existing elevator bulkhead currently that look rather, you know.
Strange, isn't it?
Strange-looking from the street. What's happening with those?
Telephone equipment that is right on top of the existing elevator bulkhead, which is not part, that's been there for centuries.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, it's all antennas and, yeah, all equipment.
Yeah, I was just wondering if that could be cleaned up a bit somehow, because it looks so odd from the street as a rooftop accretion that, you know. And thank you. Go ahead.
You're dealing with a sacred cow. The Verizon is not very cool in terms of communications. I'd rather stay away from them.
Okay.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you. All right, other questions? Okay, I think we don't have any other questions at this time, so we'll move to public testimony. If you're in the meeting and would like to speak on this item, please raise your virtual hand so we can see you. And I will turn it over to Lisa to walk us through any testimony. Okay, thank you. And we didn't have anybody signed up to speak. And again, if you'd like to speak, please raise your hand. I see a hand going up and down. Secretly. Okay, Jerry saying? Um.
What stopped video?
Yeah, sorry, we have, I think, we have something odd happening.
Stop video.
I'm going to, I'm going to allow you to speak. First name Jabawi, last name Sauce. If you'd like to testify, please state your name for the record. Did you want to testify on this item? Did you want to testify on this item? No, they left. Okay, I think that's all for the testimony. All right. Thank you. And Rich, do we have any written testimony?
Yes, we do have a resolution from Manhattan Community Board two and they recommended approval.
Okay, thank you. All right, commissioners, do we have any final questions? Okay, and Mr. Carmen, any final comments before we close the hearing and move to our discussion? Okay. All right. So commissioners, I've just asked to unmute all of you. Oh, yes, please go ahead. Sorry.
Yeah, I have no further questions or answers or whatever.
Okay, thank you. All right. So let's make a motion to close the hearing and begin our discussion. So Commissioner Bland, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Thank you. And Commissioner Luxy, would you second that motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing is closed. All right. So this is, there are two components. One is the very small rear yard addition filling in the rear lot line, which is sort of a technicality because the rules don't allow staff to approve an addition that goes to the rear lot line and or eliminates the rear yard in this quite small little rear court. And then the extension of the parapet wall and the rooftop installations behind it. So Commissioner Gustafson, would you like to start this one?
Sure. This is a relatively easy one for me in terms of that, the addition, filling out the, to the lot line. It's invisible. I don't have any concern about that whatsoever. And in terms of the rooftop accretions, I think that, you know, when you look at that view from Church Street, you kind of get the answer, which is that the rooftops in that area are a hodgepodge of everything. And it is about the last thing you're going to notice walking north on Church Street. And it doesn't detract from the massing of the existing building. So it's fine with me.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Shamir Baron.
I agree with all those points. This is approved and appropriate.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Holford Smith?
I agree. It's appropriate.
Okay. Commissioner Chapin?
I agree. It's appropriate. I just wish the sacred cows could graze a little further back on the building so it's as obvious, but that isn't the issue here. So I think the proposal is fine.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Goldblum?
Great. It's fine.
Commissioner Devonshire?
It's appropriate.
Commissioner Chen?
We were everyone.
Commissioner Bland?
Great. It's appropriate.
And Commissioner Luxy?
Very appropriate.
Commissioner Jefferson?
Appropriate.
Okay, great. I think we have a consensus to approve. Commissioner Gustafson, would you make the motion?
In the matter of LPC 21-03277, 351 Canal Street in the Soho Cast Iron Historic District, the application is to construct a rear yard addition and raise a parapet. I note that the building's style, scale, materials and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Soho Cast Iron Historic District. I recommend approval noting that the work will not eliminate or damage any significant architectural features that filling in this small courtyard surrounded by large buildings within a historic district, which features many full lot buildings, will not detract from the central green space or eliminate a significant characteristic of the historic district. That the presence of this addition, which only occupies a limited footprint at the rear of this large building, will not obscure the historic massing or overwhelm the building. That the bulkhead proportion of the addition will only be visible from public thoroughfares in limited views at a distance over secondary facades. That the bulkhead will be simply designed and finished to blend with its context, setback from the street facades and consistent with rooftop accretions at surrounding buildings in terms of its height, thereby helping the addition to remain a secondary presence in views from the street. That the raised section of the parapet at the lot line wall will be setback from the front of the building, will match the facade of materials and finish and will be consistent with the simple profile of the building's existing roof line. And that the railings will be simply designed, typical in terms of material, finished to blend with their context and only seen from public thoroughfares in select views at a distance over the secondary facade.
Okay, and Commissioner Shamir Baron, would you second that motion?
Second.
Rich, will you call the vote?
Sarah Carroll?
Aye.
Commissioner Bland?
Aye.
Commissioner Shamir Baron?
Aye.
Commissioner Chapin?
Aye.
Commissioner Chen?
Aye.
Commissioner Devonshire?
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum?
Aye.
Commissioner Gustafson?
Aye.
Commissioner Jefferson?
Aye.
Commissioner Luxy?
Aye.
And Commissioner Holford Smith?
Aye.
Okay, with 11 in favor and none opposed, the motion carries.
Okay, that's approved. Thank you very much. And we'll move to the next item.
The next item is number three, LPC 21-03963, an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Manhattan, block 1199, lot 16, 45 West 85th Street in the Upper West Side, Central Park West Historic District. This is a Bozart-style row house designed by Lafayette A. Goldstone and built in 1906 to 07. The application is to replace a window.
Commissioners, please note that staff will be presenting components of this application. Staff, you may begin.
Good morning, commissioners. This is Deena Posner from the preservation staff and I'll be presenting this application for 45 West 85th Street. I believe the applicant should also be joining to make a brief conclusion and answer any questions. The scope of the application is to remove a stained glass window at the side facade of the existing rear L, which is not visible from any public thoroughfares. This shows the location of the row house between Columbus Avenue and Central Park West. And this address is part of a row of 15 row houses seen here. These photos show the location of the window. It is on the fourth floor on the east facade of the rear L. And this photo shows the condition of the stained glass window at a distance. Close-up photos show that the window here is in disrepair. The applicant has informed us that the space behind this window is a shower and the window is currently tiled in from the interior. The applicant has proposed to keep the window on site for possible repairs and reuse at another location on the building at a future date. On the right is an existing facade elevation with the existing window in the upper right-hand corner. And on the left is a proposed aluminum one-over-one double hung window with an insulated panel containing a louver at the top sash and opaque glass at the bottom sash. The window will remain tiled in on the interior side and will serve to ventilate the interior space. And this slide shows the location of the window on a floor plan. Again, this facade is not visible from any public thoroughfares. These images show both an example of the proposed louver and a similar window configuration with a louver within a solid panel and opaque glass. And these are standard window drawings. The elevation does not reflect the proposal, which includes a louver. The sections do reflect the standard proposed aluminum window. And that completes the presentation. I'm not sure if the applicant was able to join the meeting, but if Naomi, have you joined? You can go ahead and unmute yourself.
Okay, do we have the applicant here?
No, it seems like we had a last minute hiccup with that. So I'm keeping an eye on it. And if the applicant joins, I'll promote right away. But I think the staff can try to answer questions on their behalf.
It looks like she's also asking me to send her the link. So let me do that real quick.
I see her now on the attendee list, so.
I'm promoting her now. The applicant is joining.
So if you can just unmute yourself, you can comment on this proposal.
Hello?
Hello, please go ahead. And please state your name for the record as well.
Naomi Avigdor, 45 West 85th Street.
So we just had a presentation on your application and I understand you also wanted to make a concluding statement?
Yes. What I would like to say is this window that we're talking about is in disrepair and maybe in danger of falling down. I'm not sure, but it depends on the situation. And also that it is not visible from anywhere except my neighbors to the east. So nobody that goes by the street will ever miss it or see it. And what I plan to do is save it for possibly a future use. And the window is in a bathroom behind a tiled wall. And because I have a humidity problem in the bathroom, I would like to put a vent in the upper pane of the window so that we can ventilate through it. And I request your permission to do that.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, do we have any questions? Any questions at all? Okay. I think we don't have any questions at this time. So we'll move to public testimony. And if you'd like to speak on this item, please raise your virtual hand so we can identify you and I'll turn it over to Lisa. Okay, thank you. Let's see, we had a couple people sign up. We'll start with Sarah McCully. And Sarah brought you in.
Hello. Good morning, commissioners. This is Sarah McCully. I'm testifying for Landmark West. The Landmark West Certificate of Appropriateness Committee was delighted to see this full-size stained glass window in its original wood frame. While the sill is deteriorated, we suspect that may be due to the microclimate created by an individual walling over the specimen from the inside. Due to a visible lack of maintenance, the sash and frame appear surprisingly intact. The proposal seeks to replace this special stained glass wood window with a utilitarian aluminum model of undiscerning profile in order to support a standard-sized vent. The committee feels this is the tail wagging the dog. As the proposal demonstrates, neither light nor aesthetics are a high priority. Thus, perhaps a partial louver atop the upper sash of the still-functioning window above the sink would be an acceptable solution and spare not only the common subway tile, but the art glass as well. We would urge the applicant to explore options which reincorporate and celebrate this beautiful window in this opening or elsewhere on the landmark while the leaded segments still remain intact. The Landmark West Certificate of Appropriateness Committee does not support the removal of the art glass as proposed in this application. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Next, on our sign-up list, we have Kelly Carroll. There you go.
Thank you. Kelly Carroll for Historic Districts Council. And just before I read this, because I obviously write everything ahead of time, I did hear staff say that there are plans to store and reuse at some future point on site. So with that, applications to remove stained glass windows are often presented to the landmarks commission but are usually submitted with a strategy for their relocation. Here, there is no evident plan to reincorporate what appears to be an opalescent streaky glass window somewhere in the property. Our committee does not agree that this lovely original feature should be discarded. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have Michelle Parker.
Thank you. Good morning. Can you all hear me?
Good morning. Yes, we can.
Thank you very much. Michelle Parker, co-chair of the Community Board Seven Preservation Committee, where this application lies. The full board vote on this application was 38-2-1-0 in favor of the applicant's request. We consider this, given its obscure placement, not being visible from any public way. We, the applicant said she's not sure of the origin of the stained glass window, but she was committed to store the window for potential further use and her commitment to match the fenestration with that of the building as being appropriate to the character of the historic district, hence our vote of 38-2-1-0. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And finally, we have George Calderaro.
Good morning, commissioners. George Calderaro, Chair of the Preservation Committee of the Victorian Society, New York. The Victorian Society recommends that this proposal be denied. An alternative should be found allowing this window to remain in place or relocated to another opening at this time, not some undetermined date. The 114-year-old special stained and leaded glass window should be preserved and restored to sound condition. This view is endorsed by the, as well by the Art Glass Forum, New York, an organization founded in 2000 and dedicated to scholarship about glass. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And I don't see any other hands raised. Okay, thank you. And Rich, did we receive any written testimony?
No other additional comments that were already stated.
Okay, thank you. All right. I'd like to turn back to the owner and ask if you'd like to respond to some of the comments that were made and some of the suggestions about reusing or using a portion of the window for the louver.
I will think about it, how engineering-wise we can do that. However, to restore this window needs restoration regardless of what I do with it. It needs restoration. And the cost of restoration is at least $4,000 or more. So if the landmark commission thinks that it's appropriate to spend $4,000 or more on a window and if you want me to put it in a different place or restore it here, it's even more money. Maybe you have public funds that can support this kind of a project. I mean, I'd be glad to move it to the, there's another window in this space in the bathroom that has opaque glass. So I'll be glad to move it over there and put some other simple window where the stained glass is, which will be much more visible, but I don't have the money. I mean, it's thousands of dollars and only a public organization can spend that much money on one window. This is a rental building. There are some regulated tenants here. There's no such money that I can spend four, five, six, who knows how much it will cost to move and repair a stained glass window.
Okay.
So I'm welcome. I'm welcome to get the money and I'll do it.
And are there other stained glass windows on this rear L, rear addition?
No, it's the only one.
All right. All right, commissioners, any final questions? Okay, so I am starting to request to unmute all of you so that we can move to our discussion. All right. And Commissioner Holford Smith, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
Motion to close the hearing?
Thank you. Commissioner Devonshire, would you second that motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, so the hearing is closed and we'll begin our discussion. So this is on a rear addition, not visible from any public way. And because it's on the side of the rear L, it's actually largely not visible from other places within the rear yard. So it is, as the community board said, sort of an obscure location. It also, I guess, is unclear whether it's original. There doesn't seem to be a pattern of them on the facades, on any of the other rear facades of the building. So I think one can consider those factors. The commission has approved removal of stained and leaded glass windows on rear facades, particularly when they may have been later historic alterations and there is no evidence of a pattern. So with that in mind, we'll have our discussion on this one. Commissioner Shamir Baron, would you like to start this one?
Yes, I think that since it is not visible from any public view and since we're proposing and the applicant has offered to store it for future use and take care of it, I think that suffices and it can be removed. And I think that that would be appropriate.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Holford Smith?
I agree. I think that that course of action can be found to be appropriate.
Thank you. Commissioner Chapin?
Yes, I agree with the other commissioners and perhaps the staff could have a discussion with the applicant. If the art glass group or someone has someplace that she could donate this, that is also a possibility. If there's a, you know, place that it could be preserved just as art glass, I think that the proposal is acceptable, however.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Goldblum?
I agree with previous Commissioners.
Commissioner Devonshire?
Yeah, I think the loss is lamentable, but because it's a window that's blocked up, it's almost impossible to maintain this window as it is. I would agree with Commissioner Chapin. If it gets put into the cellar, it's going to get lost or broken. I would urge the applicant to sell it to someone who actually could appreciate it and use it.
Okay, we can help with that. Commissioner Chan?
I agree with the Commissioners.
Commissioner Bland?
Yeah, I'm in agreement. I mean, this window can be appreciated and seen by nobody, basically, except maybe one or two neighbors, not from the inside, not from the outside. It's actually two pieces, of course. It's an upper sash and a lower sash, and it could be very useful and admired by somebody separating them, actually, and just hanging them in front of a window somewhere. So I like the idea of maybe selling it to somebody who would appreciate it and be able to use it in a more effective way. So I'm in... But back to the original proposal, I'm fine with it, the removal of it, and I'm fine with what's being proposed to replace it.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Lutfi?
Yeah, I think this is acceptable, and I also agree with Diana's suggestion of working with staff to possibly find it a new home.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Jefferson?
I agree with my fellow Commissioners.
Okay, and Commissioner Gustafson?
Yep, appropriate as is.
Okay, right, so I think we all are in agreement. Commissioner Shamir Baron, would you make the motion?
Yes. In the matter of LPC 21-03-963, 45 West 85th Street, the Upper West Side Central Park West Historic District, a whole art-style rowhouse designed by Lafayette A. Goldstone and built in 1906-07, the application is to replace a window. I know that the building's style, scale, materials, and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Upper West Side Central Park West Historic District, and I recommend approval finding that the existing stained glass window to be removed is not a unique design or visible from public thoroughfare and is in a deteriorated condition, but the removal of the L will not diminish the continuity of the row, which features the sporadic presence of stained glass windows in a variety of locations but not a uniform pattern, and that the window will be retained onsite or other place for possible restoration and reinstallation in the future.
Right. And Commissioner Holford-Smith, would you second that motion?
Second.
Thank you. Rich, will you call the vote?
Sheriff Carroll?
Aye.
Commissioner Bland?
Aye.
Commissioner Shamir Baron?
Aye.
Commissioner Chapin?
Aye.
Commissioner Chen?
Aye.
Commissioner Devonshire?
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum?
Aye.
Commissioner Gustafson?
Aye.
Commissioner Jefferson?
Aye.
Commissioner Lutfi?
Aye.
And Commissioner Holford-Smith?
Aye.
Okay, with 11 in favor and unopposed, the motion carries.
Okay, thank you. That's approved, and please do talk to the staff about potential places where the window could be either donated or sold. Thank you.
And we'll move to public hearing item number four, LPC 21-06165, an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the Borough of Manhattan, Block 1266. 1260 to 1270 Avenue of the Americas, Rockefeller Center Individual and Interior Landmark. A theater and office building designed by the Associated Architects with Donald Dusky and a group of fine artists and constructed in 1931 to 32 as part of an art deco-style office commercial and entertainment complex. The application is to install a skybridge.
And the applicants have joined the hearing. You now have control of the presentations that you need for the record, and you may begin.
Terrific. Hi, good morning, Commissioners. Cass Stack, Alberta Higgins, Base Market Partners. Nice to see you all again. Advance. Terrific. So as Corey mentioned, this is an application for a skybridge, a connecting bridge between the back of 1270 Avenue of the Americas to the roof of Radio City Music Hall, and it's associated with a new rooftop park that's being constructed on the roof of Radio City Music Hall. It's an exciting project and actually represents an opportunity to realize an original design of the center's planners that was never actually constructed. I'm joined this morning by EB Kelley of Tishman Spire, Greg Shunick of G3 Architects, and Sam Lawrence of HM White Landscape Designers. I'll go through the design presentation. Greg and Sam are available for questions. But before I begin the presentation, EB Kelley, I would like to say a few words about Tishman Spire's vision for this important project.
Great, thank you, Cass, and good morning, everyone. It's terrific to be able to be with you all today and to be presenting on this exciting project of a bridge to the park on the roof of Radio City Music Hall. While I wish I could say that this was an idea of our creation, this project really has its roots in the original vision for the center and the notion that Rockefeller Center was conceived as a campus of interconnected green rooftops and terraces. The ethos and spirit of bringing that greenery back has been really core to what we've been thinking about and was very much, as you all will recall, front of mind with the work that we discussed with you all last year, with the work in the public realm and around the rink. And so today, we look to sort of continue that greening vision with the park on the roof of Radio City Music Hall. But even sort of more broadly, this project is a continued affirmation of our belief in Rockefeller Center and Midtown, our commitments to be great stewards of this special place. COVID has shown us that outdoor space is even more important than we had ever realized, and as we look to bring our office tenants back, the idea of being able to deliver this as a great outdoor amenity serving our tenants and their guests feels like now is the right moment to be moving that ahead. And so we are committed to making sure that Rockefeller Center is a dynamic part of the New York recovery, and this project feels like it is a terrifically important part of that. So we really look forward to taking this next step forward and to discussing this great project with you all this morning. So thank you again.
Thank you, EB. So beginning, oops, sorry, beginning just with a site plan to orient everybody, the work that is proposed is occurring here at the roof of Radio City Music Hall and connecting back to 1270 Avenue of the Americas. It's up in the northwest quadrant of the center and comprises really work as part of the overall project of all three components, 50 Rockefeller Plaza, Radio City, and 1270 Avenue of the Americas, where the bridge is really only occurring in this area. Just some floor plans to illustrate sort of how people are going to be getting to the roof. This is a ground floor plan. 50 Rockefeller Plaza, there'll be access from the plaza through a new commercial space to these elevators that will bring visitors and the center's tenants up to the ninth floor of 50 Rockefeller Plaza and then circulating directly across the roof and onto the main roof of Radio City. And then as well, from these elevators, linking directly from this elevator lobby across the bridge onto the main roof at the 10th floor of 1270. Just to give you a few views from the street, a key plan here, this view on the upper left is taken from looking across the Sunken Plaza at the base of the Channel Gardens. Radio City is located here, 1270 Avenue of the Americas is here. None of the work that we are talking about today is visible from the street, but it does require removal of a limited amount of the store fabric, and so we're presenting it as part of the overall project. But I think it is worth noting that this work is really only going to be visible from the upper levels of buildings surrounding the park, but not from the street. And then this view from the west side of Sixth Avenue, looking across the plaza and Radio City in the foreground, and then the roof of the auditorium back here, just to orient you to the surroundings. Turning to an aerial perspective, just to show you the area of work, so this is a view looking south across the roof. This is the main roof area of Radio City. The bridge would be located here. And then flipping that around 180 degrees, again, this is the main roof area, it comprises about a half an acre of space, and as you'll see in photos, it's just built up of replacement roof pavers and simple limestone parapet. I'll also just point out, these three ventilator bulkheads, these are actually ventilation for the auditorium before, the auditorium below, and they offer a good sort of locator as you look at some of the images that are to follow. So the historic vision for the rooftops of the center, Raymond Hood's vision for the rooftops is really to plant many of these with what would be this sort of seven-acre park. And this image here on the left, St. Patrick's in the foreground, these are from 1932. Both of these views are overall view of the center and then a zoomed detailed view of the roof of Radio City. In the image on the left, you see St. Patrick's here in the foreground, and then the international buildings located here, which would all be planted, a very large planted area on the roof of Radio City, and then prior to the Associated Press Building and 50 Rockefeller Plaza being constructed, the idea was that this roof and park would extend all the way down to the plaza as well, over on the southern side of the center as well. And then this rendering also from the early 1930s, looking back at the back of 1270 Avenue of the Americas, which was the first building completed at the center in 1932, and then Radio City finished soon after, the idea was to plant the roof of Radio City with a somewhat formal garden. You can see these three ventilator bulkheads, ventilation bulkheads that I mentioned before. Those were sort of understood to be a requirement of the auditorium and were an early feature of the roof construction. I'll also point out this bridge, which would have spanned 50th Street, connecting Radio City to a roof garden that was realized at 1250 Avenue of the Americas. So there was this concept of this sort of interlocking network of bridges that would span streets and connect many of these rooftops. There was also this idea of connecting to the site's history, the Elgin Gardens, the sort of botanical garden that was on the site prior to the tenements that preceded the center. And there's also, at this time in the 1930s, this idea of improving low roofs for the benefit of office workers above, and that was very much in the forefront of Hood's mind and understanding how there would be differing scales at Rockefeller Center with some of these lower buildings, particularly the ones along Fifth Avenue and the theater, and then the much taller office buildings that surrounded it. What was realized, actually, was not a planted garden, but what was referred to at the time as a sports garden. So these are photographs, actually, of the roof of Radio City, which was outfitted with badminton courts, ping pong, flexible card tables with chests and checkers, or shuffleboard. And then later, this was used mostly for tennis, and backboards located along here. And this was in place probably until the '60s, we think, maybe the '70s, and used primarily for the occupants of Radio City in particular, for recreation, for the people who worked in the theater. Today, what we know is a sort of a more limited vision in terms of the planted rooftops. This is a view looking west from the east side of Fifth Avenue. The international buildings here, where there are smaller planted roofscapes looking over Fifth Avenue. Here is the planted garden at 1250 Avenue of the Americas at the 11th floor between 30 Rock and 1250. And then here, you can see the sort of barren half acre of the roof at Radio City where the project is proposed. Existing photos of the current roofscape, again, these are just long views across this massive roof, roof pavers, a very simple limestone parapet with limestone coping and limestone plating on the outside, and then brick on the interior. And then this photo on the lower right showing a view from the 11th floor of 1250 Avenue of the Americas from the garden there across to the roof of Radio City. An elevation sort of of the full block with Sixth Avenue located here and Rockefeller Plaza here, this is an existing elevation, and then a proposed elevation just showing at the elevation of the 10th floor of 1270, connecting to the roof of Radio City. The bridge is located in this location. An existing plan, again, these sort of three ventilation bulkheads for the auditorium, the main roof space, the elevator lobby here at 1270, and the idea is to connect directly from the elevator lobby to the roof, and then the circulation from 50 Rock coming from this area onto the main roof. There's a generator, cooling towers, and other facilities along the north edge. So as you can see in the proposed park plan, the idea is to sort of have access on the southern part of this sort of asymmetrically sort of organically designed roofscape, access, as I said, directly from the elevator lobby at 1270 across the bridge here, and then coming across this pathway that then also connects to 50 Rockefeller Plaza. There'll be open views to the south, and then where this larger equipment is, most of the taller plantings will be located around the perimeter. So turning to the rendering of the park itself, as I said, there are cooling towers and generators along the north edge of the park, there are plantings of trees along that north edge and to the east around those bulkheads, a hedge along the west edge of the park, there's a raised belvedere, which is designed to sort of take the bridge, and you'll see a section here where the bridge just spans over the parapets and doesn't require cutting into the existing parapets, and I'll show you a section of that in just a moment. And then both hardscape and softscape areas, walking paths, gravel paths along the south edge that'll allow views back to 30 Rockefeller Plaza, 1250 Avenue of the Americas, then of course, the center, the center beyond. The bridge, as I mentioned here, is of simple and contemporary design. It's really meant to merely be a conveyance for people from 1270, the park, to circulate back and forth. It's contemporary in design, and we think matches well with the design of the park, and it's really meant to be sort of an understated feature. It has brick, sorry, it has granite pavers, it'll be clad in a statuary bronze with simple glass railings. That section that I described, this is an existing section, so here we are at the 10th floor here, and here, the idea, and then there's this existing parapet at the upper level of the roof, and there's a span between the back of 1270 and the roof of Radio City. The idea is to span over that and to clear that existing parapet with a sort of built-up section here of the park, this sort of raised belvedere, which will provide views over the park, new retaining walls sitting on the roofscape, and then the bridge, as I said, spans over that parapet and then connects onto the platform of the roof. In terms of the location of the attachments and the removals that are required, again, this is an elevation of the east side of 1270 Avenue of the Americas. You can see the area of work here. This is located 49 feet back from the street and on 50th Street and 97 feet back from 51st Street. As I mentioned, none of this work here at the building or the bridge itself is visible from the street. A detailed view of where the bridge will connect and then an annotated photograph just illustrating the areas of removals that will be needed. These are replacement windows that were installed in the last few years, and the removals will involve, and I'll talk a bit more in detail about this, limestone panels that we think we can actually remove perhaps and put back, and then spandrel panels, which will be stored, removed and stored onsite in order to allow for the door openings that will access onto the bridge, and I'll talk a bit more about that. These removals, you know, this represents sort of two spandrels. The entire elevation has over 400 of these aluminum spandrels, and the building alone has 1,200, and that's just at 1270. This spandrel detail is used, you know, obviously throughout the center. I'll also note that the commission back in 2015 approved the removal of about 20 of these spandrels at the upper floors of 75 Rockefeller Plaza, which was actually visible from the street, and this work, as I mentioned, will not be visible. So again, an existing elevation showing what would need to be removed, and then a proposed elevation showing the metal and glass doors. These are similar to terrace door designs that are being installed throughout the center, and then a section through the bridge, a required exit sign because this is an ingress path. These are some photos from the location where the bridge touches down on the roof, and you can just see that at this elevation and this setback, all you see are the surrounding buildings, you don't see any of the streets. So just to confirm that none of this is visible from the streets. An existing section on the left cut through the window, and a proposed section on the right now through the door, as I mentioned, will be right, now through the door, as I mentioned, will be removing a replacement window, and then the backup masonry and spandrel panel, and then connecting the structure and the steel directly back to the structure of the building, and allowing for great access directly from the interior of the floor onto the bridge. I'll also just mention that all the work that's proposed, both on the 1270 side and at the 50 Rockefeller Plaza side, is all fully accessible. In terms of removals, as I mentioned, we'll be removing what's within this sort of dotted and dashed area to connect the bridge back to the structure of 1270. That includes these windows, which will be lowered and converted to doors, but working with this team who's done an extensive amount of work throughout the center, we have a clear understanding of the construction and understand how these removals can be done in a way that will allow us to salvage all of the material. So the way we'll be doing this is first, cutting the joints of the limestone. We think we can actually remove the limestone itself, salvage it and reinstall it. If that's not possible, we'll be able to replace the limestone. It's a fairly typical material, and it's been done throughout the center where required, with matching shots on limestone. The spandrel panels themselves are anchored with little flanges set behind the limestone, so once the limestone is off, we can get to those flanges and then remove the backup masonry behind the spandrels. There are straps at the back of the spandrels that connect to that backup masonry, so we know, because this has been done previously, that we can remove these spandrels without impacting them, and we'll be able to store these two spandrel panels on site for future use. Continuing to some details of the bridge itself, this is a plan of the bridge. It is from the doors to the bridge, it's 39 feet in length, 17 feet wide at its widest point where the two doors will be located, nine feet wide where it touches down on the park. This is a detail just illustrating that where these glass railings are set along the edge of the bridge, they don't actually anchor back to the limestone, but are set off by an inch, they're really attached down to the curb and parapet of the bridge. Here's a detail here, showing the granite pavers, the glass attachment back to the cladding, and then the structure of the bridge itself. As I mentioned, the bridge will be clad in bronze panels. It's a material, obviously, that's used throughout the center, and as you'll see, we'll talk a bit more about this in a moment. We looked at the idea of using a different material, obviously, this is going to be adjacent to aluminum, but the way one is going to be experiencing this bridge, it's sort of a pedestrian level, we felt bronze was a more appropriate material, it's a typical material for the center at a pedestrian level, and it also ties nicely with the materials that are being used for the metal elements throughout the park. As I mentioned, there'll be lights, this is an egress path, so there are lights that are required. These will be two-inch diameter luminaires, finished in a bronze finish, and set between the panels. You can see this detail here, there's a four-inch gap between the glass panels, and the luminaires at two-inch diameter will be set directly between each of those gaps along the length of the bridge. This luminaire is also being used throughout the park itself for lighting of the pathways, et cetera. And as I mentioned, bronze is a very common material, perhaps even the sort of predominant material throughout the center, but particularly at a sort of pedestrian level. And we, knowing that the bridge is really only going to be seen by people sort of walking across and those looking down on it, it's something that's sort of experienced in a different way. It's sort of more akin to the way bronze is used at the pedestrian scale. So we collected a series of images of how bronze is used throughout the center, often in a sort of medium to dark statuary finish, like these architectural features, the marquee and infill panels at the north side of 30 Rockefeller Plaza, grills, decorative grills and displays, this at Radio City, of course, with the artwork at Plaza d'Italia and Atlas, very commonly across all the storefronts throughout the center, both the commercial and retail storefronts, but also the infill at the side street building entries, and then even sort of more sort of commonplace features, infrastructure and things like that, radiator grills at 30 Rockefeller Plaza, the entry to the subway on Sixth Avenue, and this Chase Manhattan Bank night deposit drop as well. So bronze, obviously, is a very common material throughout the center, and is one that's experienced at a pedestrian level, similar to the way the bridge will be experienced. Some samples, again, a medium statuary for the cladding of the bridge, a similar finish for the luminaires, and then a sandblasted granite for the walking surface of the bridge itself. And then finally, the rendering that you saw before. In terms of its design, as I mentioned, it's really meant to be contemporary and understated, it's really a conveyance, it's a way to get people from 1270 onto the park and vice versa. And in its design, it's sort of simple and contemporary, similar to the park. In terms of the removals, they are quite limited, we're always very cautious when an application involves the removal of historic material, but this is two of 1,200 panels and ones that cannot be seen. And then in terms of its materiality, its granite and bronze treatments, these are consistent with and compatible with materials seen throughout the center. Thanks very much, and we look forward to taking any questions.
All right, thank you. Commissioners, do we have any questions at this time? All right, I don't see any questions at this time, so we'll move to public testimony. If you're in the meeting and would like to speak on this item, please raise your virtual hand, and I will turn it over to Lisa Krasavich to walk us through the testimony.
Okay, thank you, and we have one person sign up, Kelly Carroll.
Kelly Carroll, Historic Districts Council. There is both historic and current precedent for rooftop use within the Rockefeller Center complex, and the proposed skybridge makes more roof access possible. The insertion of the bridge within existing masonry openings is sensitive, and this application is totally appropriate. Thank you.
Great, thank you. And I don't see any other hands raised.
Okay, thank you. Rich, did we receive any additional written testimony?
Yes, we received a resolution from Manhattan Community Board 5, and they recommended approval.
Great, thank you. All right, commissioners, any final questions? Applicant team, any final comments before we move to our discussion?
I don't think so.
Okay, thank you. All right, commissioners, I'm starting to unmute and request to unmute you all. And Commissioner Chen, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
No move.
Thank you. And Commissioner Devonshire, would you second that motion?
Second it.
Great, thank you. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, the hearing is closed, and I do want to just note for the record that Commissioner Goldblum was recused on this item and has not been present for the meeting. So we'll begin our discussion now. Commissioner Devonshire, would you like to start this one?
This is one of the more admirable applications I've seen in a long time. I think it's really fantastic that we're heading toward Hood's vision with this, and I am totally in favor of it. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Chen.
Yeah, I agree. I was just there a week ago in the rain, admiring all the details, and part of reason for me getting into architecture was the tour of this great complex. So I think it's very well done, I think that I especially love the part about the bridge not touching the parapet, and I look forward to seeing the classic details of this center.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Bland.
I'll just add on, I guess our only purview really is the window removal and the new bridge, which is all done brilliantly. I suppose we're not really approving the garden, I'm really a little unclear on that, but whether we are or not, I want to comment on what a great affirmation this is, not just for Rockefeller Center, but for our city during this time, and it's, as was mentioned by Commissioner Devonshire, the original Hood vision in the days of delirious New York are really coming to the fold to be reimagined and thought through and installed. It's just incredibly exciting, I think, great project.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Letty.
I'm just gonna, you know, reaffirm everything that my colleagues have said so far, this is an exciting project, a wonderful, a wonderful opportunity to really bring Hood's original plans to life. The landscaping looks fantastic, it's going to be an excellent addition to the building, and it will be wonderful for the tenants who are there, and it's not visible.
Thank you. Commissioner Jefferson.
Wonderful presentation. It's wonderful to see Hugh Fevers' rendering come into life. This would add an incredible piece of architectural element to this ensemble.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Gustafson.
Yeah, to quote Kelly Carroll, totally appropriate. Totally.
Okay, Commissioner Shamir Baron.
Yeah, I mean, I really, first of all, it's a wonderful project, and so interesting that I really do think that it will mean, it does mean, that this ensemble of buildings is really going to play a significant part in this idea of the recovery of the city, but more than that, the possibility of the future of the city. That this, you know, we've seen roof gardens, but this is really at a scale of intention that I think is so powerful for the future of how we'll live in the city, and the fact that it's kind of, that that's woven into a preservation set of questions and ideas and debates is so interesting to me, and I think that I'm so happy that we're taking a part in the approval and in the thinking through of this kind of work, because it makes that connection between the kind of the history of the city and the future of the city through preservation, it's very powerful.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Holford Smith.
I agree with everything that's already been said, it's a fantastic project, and I think it'll be a real amenity for those who have the opportunity to use this beautiful park, so totally, I agree, totally appropriate.
Okay, and Commissioner Chapin.
Yes, I agree with all of my colleagues' remarks, it's a great project, and also with the HDC testimony, which was right on the mark, but totally appropriate, and a wonderful project for the city.
That's great, thank you. All right, I think we're all are in agreement that this is an exciting and appropriate project, it brings the Hood's vision of rooftop gardens to life, I think, you know, there was even the historic drawings of bridges, and it fits within that, and involves limited amount of removal of fabric, and the plan is to store that fabric in any event, so I think totally appropriate by our standards, and very exciting, and looking forward to seeing it fulfilled and realized. Commissioner Devonshire, would you go ahead and make the motion?
Absolutely, thank you. In the matter of LPC 21-06165, 1260 to 1270 Avenue of the Americas at Rockefeller Center, an individual and interior landmark. An application to install a skybridge, I recommend approval, finding that the development and construction of Rockefeller Center included landscaped roof gardens, including unrealized plans for connecting skybridges. Therefore, the proposed skybridge is in keeping with the center's original goals of a network of rooftop gardens. That the skybridge installation and modifications to window openings and rooftop hardscape features will not be visible from the public thoroughfares. That the simple contemporary design of the skybridge will not compete with the architectural features of the adjacent buildings. That the light fixtures of the skybridge will be viewed as vertical railing posts and are well-integrated into the design. That the bronze cladding, granite paving, and simple glass railings at the skybridge will be in keeping with materials used elsewhere at the center. That the historical aluminum spandrel panels will be carefully removed and stored on site, thereby preserving these significant features for potential reuse. That the proposed doors are simple in design, and maintain the existing width of the base and are compatible with the configuration materials and design of the existing historical windows, and the work will not detract from the special architectural or historic character of the Rockefeller Center individual landmark complex. Amen.
And Commissioner Chen, would you second that motion?
Delighted to second it.
Okay, thank you. And Rich, will you call the vote?
Chair Carroll.
Aye.
Commissioner Bland.
Aye.
Commissioner Shamir Baron.
Aye.
Commissioner Chapin.
Aye.
Commissioner Chen.
Aye.
Commissioner Devonshire.
Aye.
Commissioner Gustafson.
Amen.
Commissioner Jefferson.
Aye.
Commissioner Letty.
Aye.
And Commissioner Holford Smith.
Aye.
Okay, with ten in favor and one opposed, the motion carries.
All right, that's approved, thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Good luck, and we'll now move to our public meeting agenda.
Okay, and the first is public meeting item number one, LPC 21-03065, an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Brooklyn, Lot 2101, Lot 7505, 256 Cumberland Street in the Ford Green Historic District. This is an Italianate-style rowhouse built in the mid-1860s, and the application is to modify a masonry opening. This was last presented at the public hearing of February 23rd, 2021, no action was taken at that time, and the staff will take us through the revised proposal.
Good morning, commissioners, Winnie Chow Preservation Staff. This item is 256 Cumberland Street, located on the west side of Cumberland Street between Lafayette and Decap Avenue in the Ford Green Historic District. It is a pair of a rowhouse, as shown here, this is our site, this is the sister building, and this is in a larger apartment building next to it. Here's a couple more views of that. Here are some photos of the front elevation. Here are photos of the rear, which is also the location of our work. This is the existing condition at the rear, which is not visible from public thoroughfares. The proposal, which was last presented at the public hearing of February 23rd, 2021, was to combine and enlarge the masonry openings at the top floor of the rear facade. This is what was proposed. At that hearing, a few commissioners expressed support for the proposal as is, others expressed support for modifying the opening but not to the extent proposed, and some commissioners were not supportive of modifying the opening. As a response, the applicant has revised the proposal, as seen here, to only enlarge one window at the top floor of the rear facade vertically by lowering the sill and removing the plain brickwork beneath the existing opening. The width of the existing opening and the lintel will be maintained, the infill at the proposed enlarged opening and the existing door will match. The following slides are detailed views of the proposal. So here are the close-up photo and elevation showing the existing conditions. Here are the close-up render and elevation showing the previous proposal. And here are the close-up render and elevation showing the new proposal. The applicant is here to answer any questions, thank you.
All right, thank you, Winnie. Commissioners, do we have any questions for this, on this application, for either Winnie or that applicant? All right, not seeing any questions. Let me just turn to Rich and see if we received any additional written comments for this item.
We have not.
Okay, that's what I thought. All right, commissioners, I'm going to start to unmute. All of you are requested to unmute so that we can begin our discussion. Okay, and so this, as you may recall, this was a pair of buildings, and it, on one side, has the larger apartment building, and then the one in the pair has the L, which in the views from the rear yard actually sort of obscured these top floor window openings. So at the last hearing, as Winnie said, many commissioners were in support of the proposal as is, and others asked for some changes to reflect the original fenestration pattern a little more closely, but given that it was only a pair, not a consistent row, and that the L- and that the L and the larger apartment building sort of changed the context and reading of these two, something could be found appropriate. And so I think the applicant has gone back and revised the proposal to include just dropping the sills. Of course, at staff level, and the existing condition allows for, is one window that's dropped. If it hadn't been the staff level, rules would allow for one window to be dropped. So in this case, we're asking, the applicant is asking for an additional window to be dropped. So why don't we go ahead and start our discussion? Commissioner Chapin, would you like to start this one?
Yeah, sure. I think that it's appropriate. It's in an unusual condition, and they are now maintaining the, you know, the top profile of the windows. And I think it's fine. I can approve it.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Goldblum.
Agreed.
Commissioner Devonshire.
I think it's appropriate.
Commissioner Chen.
Agreed.
Commissioner Bland.
I think I was okay with it originally because of the variety of conditions, which have made the pair very different, actually. But, so this is fine, too, if this is what they want to do.
All right, Commissioner Lutze. Okay, I think she's not available at the moment. So Commissioner Jefferson.
The work is simple and clean. Keeping the lintels on the new windows work well. I can approve this.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Gustafson, sorry.
Appropriate.
Okay, and Commissioner Shamir Baron.
This is appropriate.
And Commissioner Holford Smith.
Agreed, appropriate.
Okay, great. I think we're all in agreement. So Commissioner Chapin, would you go ahead and make the motion?
Sure, thank you. Certificate of appropriateness, Borough of Brooklyn, LPC 21-03065, 256 Cumberland Street, Fort Greene Historic District, an Italianate-style rowhouse built in the mid-1860s. Application is to modify a masonry opening. I note that the building's style, scale, materials, and details are among the features that contribute to the architectural and historic character of the Fort Greene Historic District. I recommend approval, finding that the proposed work will not be visible from any public thoroughfare, that the enlargement of its second masonry opening at the top floor will be limited to dropping the sill and removing a minimal amount of plain masonry, that the modified masonry opening maintains the historic rhythm of masonry openings in continuity with the adjacent sister building, and that the work will not detract from the special architectural or historic character of the building.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Goldblum, would you second that motion?
I second the motion.
Thank you. Rich, will you call the vote?
Chair Carroll.
Aye.
Commissioner Bland.
Aye.
Commissioner Shamir Baron.
Aye.
Commissioner Chapin.
Aye.
Commissioner Chen.
Aye.
Commissioner Devonshire.
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum.
Aye.
Commissioner Gustafson.
Aye.
Commissioner Jefferson.
Aye.
Commissioner Lutze. I don't believe he's here. And Commissioner Holford Smith.
Aye.
Okay, with ten in favor, none opposed, and one not present, the motion carries.
All right, that's approved. Thank you very much, and we'll move to the next public meeting item.
And this is also the last item of the day. This is public meeting item number two. LPC 20-09908, an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Brooklyn, block 1242, lot 1, 959 Sterling Place in the Crown Heights North Historic District 2. This is an open area on the same lot as a Romanesque Revival, Gothic Revival-style institutional building designed by Mercy and Thomas and built in 1888 to 89, but later extensions designed by William Kennedy and built in 1911 to 13. The application is to demolish a portion of the existing building and reconstruct the exposed facade and to construct a new building with excavation and a curb cut. This was last presented at the public meeting of November 17, 2020. No action was taken at that time. Staff will do a brief introduction before we turn it over to the applicants and open the proceedings for them to show the revised proposal.
Good morning, Commissioners. Leanne Pollock Preservation Staff. This item is 959 Sterling Place. At the October 20 and November 17, 2020, public hearing and meetings, the commissioners reviewed this application for a new building on an open portion of the lot presently occupied by the Hebron School Building. The commissioners were generally supportive of constructing a new building on this lot and following a campus model for the development. But commissioners felt that the building mass needed to be reduced and further broken down with additional views to the historic building opened, and that the design and details of the new building should take more cues from the historic building. Commissioner opinion was mixed regarding how to accomplish the reduction in mass, with some support for dividing the building into two masses and holding the street wall of the new building at the corner of New York Avenue and Sterling Place, while other commissioners wanted to see the building mass set back from the corner and from the adjacent rowhouses and consolidated at the center of the Sterling Place frontage. Still, other commissioners wanted to see an overall reduction in the building height. The commissioners also felt that the transition between the new building and the adjacent rowhouses on Sterling Place needed to be further studied and improved, possibly by relocating the proposed driveway and curb cut to Sterling Place, and that the prominent use of standing seam metal needed change to a different building material that was more commonly found throughout the historic district. Morris Ajmi is here to present the proposed changes. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And before we turn it over to the applicant, let's have a motion to open the proceedings. Commissioner Shamir Baron, would you make that motion?
So moved.
Thank you. And Commissioner Chapin, would you second that motion?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, applicants may begin. And one more thing before they do. I just want to note for the record that Commissioner Jefferson is recused from this item and has left the meeting. Right, applicants may begin.
Good morning. I'm Morris Ajmi. Good morning, Chair Carroll, Commissioners and staff. We heard numerous comments at the last, at the hearing, and I believe we responded to all of them, and I'd like to take you through. So just as a reminder, here's the site looking northeast from the corner of New York Avenue and Sterling Place. On the left is the massing that was previously proposed, which we showed at the October and November meetings, or hearing and meetings. And on the right is a currently proposed design. And I'll take you through, in a series of steps, the changes that were made. But first, we were asked to reconsider the overall mass of the building to break up the length along Sterling Place, to look at the height and mitigate the height as it relates to the townhouses to the east, study the garage entry, which was previously on New York Avenue, and further emphasize the campus approach. And as Leanne mentioned, also to look at the metal material that was previously proposed for the north facade and to use brick detailing that was more familiar to the neighborhood context. So if we start, here is the previous massing, and we go through a series of steps. The first step was to push back the corner volume 10 feet. We also reduced the dormer height by a floor. If you can toggle back, please, Tom. Yeah. So you can see that the dormer height was reduced, as well as pushing that mass back 10 feet. Next, next slide. We removed the portion of the building and now have a 25-foot gap between our proposed building and the adjacent townhouse. Next, we also eliminated a large portion of the building, separating it into two more distinct masses on Sterling Place, which opens views to the tower and the Hebron School to the north. And that happens at the center, as well as on the east side where the townhouses are. We relocated the curb cut and the entry to the garage, from New York Avenue to Sterling Place, within that 25-foot space. And there's landscaping there as well. We were also asked to look at the massing. We changed the massing so the two volumes have similar and related articulation, but are different in terms of their overall massing, as well as the details and treatment and color of materials. Next slide, please. We accentuated the base of the building, and you'll see we did that in two different ways on the west and east side of that entry piece. And we changed the material from the north face, which was metal and glass, to masonry. We do have a metal expression for the roof and the top story, which I'll show you more in detail. But I believe that diamond-shaped zinc works really well in this context. Next, we have two elevations. The previously presented project on the top and the currently proposed building below. And you can see all of the changes that I've mentioned, with the exception of some of the details which we'll get into. But pushing the mass back 10 feet, I think, made a big difference, and also reducing the height of the dormer on the west side. The articulation that is related but different between the two volumes, I think, helps distinguish these, and it's similar to a lot of the larger apartment buildings that you see throughout the neighborhood on corners. We opened up the space between the building. You can see through the base. It's a tall one-story, as well as over, and you can see the Hebron School behind it. And then again, the elimination of the portion of the building on the east side, allowing for the new garage entry and curb cut and entry. I will mention that we've reduced the overall square footage of the building by over 10,000 square feet. You can see, this is the north elevation seen from Park with the existing building ghosted in front. The top, again, was a previously proposed building, and the lower elevation is what we are currently proposing. Again, you can see that the building draws inspiration from some of the gables and articulation that is on the existing building. We have a series of rendered views before and after, with one or two new views. But there are a lot of views, so I'll go through, not quickly, but smoothly. How's that? Next view, first view, please. This is looking, this is on New York Avenue, looking northeast. And the next view, you can see the dramatic change, I think, by pushing that building back. And at the last hearing, we heard comments about pushing it back, or maybe opening it up. So we sort of did all of the above, and I think that it's successful in helping to break down the overall massing of the building, but also opening up views to the Hebron School and the new garden that we're proposing. You can see some of the details I mentioned earlier. We changed the dormer materials to brick, both on this west facade, as well as the back, which you'll see in a minute. We're using a rusticated sort of rock-faced brick at the base of the west side of the project and a rusticated base on the right. I have more details to show you. Next, looking north on New York Avenue, you see the building, the previously proposed building and the new proposal. So that really opens up views to the chapel. This is a view looking at the space between the two buildings. This is a previously proposed, prominently, you can see the ramp was a prominent feature there. And so it's much improved in the next view, where we eliminated that ramp. And we now have approximately 60-foot space that runs the length between the two buildings. You know, the buildings protrude out in and out at certain points, but at least 60 feet runs through that. And also, just to note, that material was changed from metal to brick. Here's a new view that, sorry. Here's a new view showing that opening as well, and the garden space between. Sterling Place, looking east, from a little further back than the previous view that we saw. This is the previous proposal and the new proposal. So, and sorry, go back one, Tom. You can see the roof material there, and I'll show you in detail what we're proposing, but I think that that is sympathetic to the character of the neighborhood. Next view. I'll show you two different views of this after, this is the previous view, looking west on Sterling Place. And in the next view, you can see the change where we create that gap. This view, because of the viewpoint, it's a little difficult to tell. But in the next shot, you get some of the heights of the adjacent buildings and the building across the street projected onto our building. The red line on the left is at 69 feet, which is the street wall of the apartment building across the street. And we projected that to the right side, because it looks like our building is taller. But in fact, it's 60 feet to the street wall. So it is lower at the street than the building to the south or across the street. Next shot, here you can see how that space, that 25-foot gap, opens up views to the school. And we believe that that was one of the comments that was requested, and I think it's very successful here. Next view, this was a previous entry that connected the two buildings. It really was more of one long building. And now, in the currently proposed, you see, it really reads as two very separate volumes that are connected by this lobby space, which is open and glazed on both sides. There will be a roof terrace on top as well, but you can see the building beyond. And then, looking south at the space between the two buildings, there was extensive use of metal that you see on the facade there. And in the current scheme, that is mostly brick. There are some sections that have metal on the roof, which I'll show you in a second. But these buildings have slightly different facades and different brick materials. But I'll take you through how we've distributed those across the two buildings in a second. Next view is on New York Avenue, looking south. You see the chapel on the left, the previously proposed volume, gable end on the right there. In the next view, you can see the effect of pushing that back the 10 feet, which I think made a big difference. And then a view looking southwest from the corner of Park in New York. You see the building, the existing Hebron School and chapel in the foreground and the proposed building in the background. And in the next slide, you'll see that that moves over as well. And I think that that helps. Next shot, from Park Place, looking at the space between, and that little connector piece that connects the school to the chapel, the previously proposed, this is the previously proposed building. And in the next view, you'll see that that really opens up the views there. And the material for that roof, I think, is compatible with the roof that you see in the foreground. And also, the articulation of those vertical elements relates to the school as well, further enforcing the campus concept. Next, shaded in the sort of emerald green is an outline with a red line around it of the previous proposal, which you can't see because of the trees. But in the next view, and sorry, this is looking south on New York Avenue. You'll see the effect of moving that back. Okay. And now, we'll talk a little bit about the materials. We have a couple of, three materials that we're using. As I mentioned, it's rock-faced brick that's used as the material for the, and I'll show you in more detail on the elevations in a second, for the base on the west side, and then the two. And then, the two brick materials there are used on both buildings in slightly different ways. But we do have a rusticated base on the east side as well. We have a metal for the windows and then a zinc diamond shaped pattern, which is used on the roof, which is hiding the mechanical equipment and the elevator overrun. And it wraps down on the top floor to lower the appearance of that north facade. We're restoring the fence, that's the color proposed for that. And then the concrete pavers that are used at the entry piece. In the next slide, we've color coded the materials with a salmon, a light blue, and a mint green. And those correspond to the elevations below. So as I mentioned earlier, the top left rock face brick is being used as the base material at the first floor. On the west side of the building, we have the blue smoother brick that still has a texture above. And then the smoothest material, the green, is used on the east side as well as in a ribbed pattern that I'll show you in an image afterward. And there's an accentuated cornice as well on the top of both buildings. And we've hidden some of the expansion joints, both in the cornice and in a reveal at the base, which I'll show you at the end. This is the north, looking south, the north elevation. The materials wrap around and then define each tower from the respective volumes. And then we've inverted the material in between those towers on the two sides. And the rusticated base wraps around as well. And then, in the next slides, you see the roof material is indicated, as well as the area articulated where that wraps down on the top floor there. And then we're using the other metals as indicated. In the next images, we have two. Well, we have, on the left side is the detail for the brick pattern that we're using. As I mentioned, on the east side of the project, it's a rusticated rock face on the west. But on the east, we're doing a rib pattern as seen there. And in the center section, the cut between the buildings, we do have some mechanical equipment because we tried to keep as much off the roof as possible. And the ventilation is handled through the brick openings that are articulated with that cross pattern that you see in the center. And then the bricks are the same bricks that wrap around from the face, the three and four that you see. Sorry, three and two that you see above. And on the gable ends, we're articulating the space below the windows. It was a diamond pattern. And the space below the windows are metal on the other face of the building, as seen above. And then the last two images here are showing the horizontal and vertical expansion joints. The horizontal joints will be pretty much camouflaged as a, as a, as a mortar within a caulking that matches the mortar joints. And we've aligned the expansion joint to the edge of the plaster so that it's minimally visible. And again, that would be in a caulking that matched the mortar color for each area. And then, the next is the east volume, again, a similar treatment there. Thank you. I think we've addressed all the comments that were made from the commissioners and some of the testimony that we heard, both in terms of the overall massing, the materials and the volumes of the building. And I think that the overall design has improved dramatically through incorporating those comments. So happy to hear your comments again. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. We do have some questions for Commissioner Goldblum. Go, please go ahead.
Thank you. Can you tell us what is happening at the ground floor programmatically? It looks like storefronts, but I don't imagine that they are.
No, the entrance to the complex is through the centerpiece. But those apartments would have a small aerial way, a garden in front of their apartment or units.
So those, the first floor spaces that are articulated as wider expanses of glass with three panes of glass and/or doors, that's, that's amazing, that.
Yes.
And what's the floor-to-floor heights?
10 feet.
Thank you.
Yeah, 10, that's 10 feet typical from the base, with the exception of the entry piece, piece, which is two floors tall.
Thank you very much.
All right. Other questions, commissioners? All right. I'm not seeing any other questions at this time. So we did receive a lot of written material, which has all, anything that came in before yesterday was, and up until midday yesterday, was shared with the commissioners. But we'll ask Rich to just summarize that as well for the record. Rich, can you go ahead and do that?
Yes. So we received nearly 350 new letters in opposition to the revised proposal, including from Councilmember Carnegie, Brooklyn Community Board Eight, the Crown Heights North Association, Friends of 920 Park Place, and Historic District Council. And we also received three letters in support of the revised proposal.
Okay, thank you. All right. Any final questions, commissioners, before we move to our discussion? All right. And Morris, anything you'd like to say before we begin our discussion? Any final comment?
Yeah, I think that the process always makes the projects better. And I hope that the response satisfies the commissioners. That's all.
Okay, thank you. And commissioners, I am now requesting to unmute you, so just look through that. We'll begin. So as, you know, was presented today, the, at the last public meeting, I think all of the commissioners agreed that it would be appropriate to develop this site. And all found that the campus approach that was proposed is, was appropriate. And the commission also at the time recognized that the historic district features both row houses and apartment buildings, and that there's often a juxtaposition between the row houses of the mid-block and the apartment buildings on the corners. But they did ask, you all did ask the applicants to re-study the sides, the massing and siding to break down the, the building itself and to open up views to the existing school building and to the green space. And as was also mentioned, there were concerns about the metal material and the sort of regularity of the design and asked if the design be a little less rhythmic and more picturesque. And so there were lots of different suggestions about the siding. I think that the applicant has sort of taken a little bit of everything to to try to address all of the comments and the revised proposal. So we'll see in our discussion how successful that was. Commissioner Bland, would you like to start? I think last time you specifically, I think you were the first one to talk about breaking it into at least two separate buildings. So I think it would be great to hear how you're feeling at this point.
Well, I'm feeling much better. I think, I'm sorry to hear that there's so much opposition still locally, sort of want there to be a little more support. But sometimes that's hard in neighborhoods. In any event, I think this is mightily improved. I, I think all the moves that Morris has made, the pushing back, the separating into two masses with a big gap in between is all very successful. And begins to place it in quite an appropriate manner, I believe. I think Morris Ajmi has become a past master at Fraternal Twins. And this is an example of how those fraternal twins in these two masses operate. I was interested to still note that these buildings, the cornice line of the two tall masses is still nine feet lower than the building across the street. It still seems pretty high to me and pretty repetitive. But so are the buildings across the street, at least in this, the foreground. The, the, the building that's in the background, I'm forgetting which direction that is now. In this slide, is opposite, I believe, opposite townhouses. So it makes it that disparity a little greater. So really, I don't, I'm not going to start niggling with every, all the details. Morris is such a fine architect at that. I'm not going to do that. But still slightly hesitant about the height, maybe, of the cornice. But it could be that I'm just seeing it at this, at this level and not experiencing it adequately with the building across the street. But otherwise, I think the moves that are made, brick that's being chosen, the roofing material, all seems to be consistent within itself, but also a very contextual response to the neighborhood and the context of both the extraordinary institutional complex on the site, but also to the surrounding mix of, of of apartment houses and individual townhouses.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Lutfi, how are you thinking about this now?
I think, I think the applicant, Morris, you, Morris, you've made it like a tremendous move here. I mean, it's almost like night and day. The original plan was something that in no way connected to the context around it. And this new design, I think, really has, is much more compatible and with, with what's there. I think the, the setting back of the building has, of the buildings has made a huge difference. The opening up of the building in the, in the center also takes a lot of the heft off of it. The, the, you know, the regularity that you had before, just in your building had, just in terms of fenestration, seemed almost commercial in a sense. But right now, I mean, it's reading residential. There are, I like the materials and I like the differentiation between the buildings and within the buildings through your use of texture with those materials. And I'm also not going to get into nitpicking about, about that. But what, I'm having a pro, a couple of issues. And one is how the building is hitting the ground. Because I feel like there's almost a disconnect between that base, which is, to me, reading almost as a commercial. Their windows are just, or doors. It, you know, sliding doors, if that's what they are. They're just reading, they're reading commercial, they're reading separate. Then there, it's not a strong connection with the top. And I feel like in some way, maybe some masonry has to come down to, to change that. I also feel like, you know, I'm a little bit of mixed mind about the, all of the glass in the connection. I mean, I think if my fellow commissioners think that works, I could go with it. But I'm, I'm not sure about that. And, you know, it, it does still look a little high to me, but it also, but I could accept it. And, you know, again, I think it's much more harmonious and you've, you've done a great job.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Gustafson?
I, I agree with comments you've already heard, in particular Commissioner Lutfi's comment about the first floor reading, reading commercial. And, and the second comment, her last comment, I, although I feel a little more strongly about this, I still think the, the height of these two structures is probably a floor too much. Other than that, I'm fine with it.
Okay, thank you. And Commissioner Shamir Baron?
Thanks. I'm afraid I have to disagree. I don't think that this is an improvement. Or, or let's say that i- if I were to compare the two projects, the previous iteration, I found, even though I had lots of problems with how much of it there was, I found it more convincing as a, an interpreted kind of, an interpretation of the historic masonry, in a lighter color, much more kind of flattened, but, but sort of carved expression, meaning that the, the, the windows were sort of hard cut into the, into the surface of that, of that very flat, solid masonry. And it was, it was, and again, an interpretation, it seems to me, or like a riff on, on, on the historic building, institutional building. And additionally, I thought that the previous iteration it defined and kind of made for a reading that allowed for kind of something that almost looked like townhouses that were connected or row houses. And we got that kind of, both the horizontal and as well as the kind of repetitive datum. And I thought it was much more convincing to see that on, especially on, specifically on Sterling, to see that rhythm rather than this kind of bigger, these two big, what read to me as big buildings. And almost like, just from the rendering, which is not exactly the right kind of view, some almost a lie, a little bit tenement-y is sort of E, but not really. Obviously, the windows are bigger and the articulation of the masonry is much more elaborate. But I just, I don't think that the space in the middle gives us really anything. It's a kind of a strange, you know, kind of apartment building connector. It doesn't read to me like a way to, to understand or to have views into the campus. I'd say that the one thing that I find interesting about this new, new version, the new proposal, but that is not carried out to the extent that I think it could be, has to do with allowing for us to understand one kind of building on the Sterling Street side and another one interior to the block relating to the historic institutional building. The problem is that as it's presented and as it's, as it's drawn, the material on the Sterling Street side would need to be considerably lower. Like, I would say two stories at least lower, so that you really read that difference. So that like on the Sterling Street side, you'd get the, the more of the, of the, of the townhouse height-ish, or it could be a bit taller. And then behind it, towards the, on the institution side, you'd get that kind of towering or, you know, pitched roof. And you'd read those two things as kind of different from one another, but defining two different layers as you approach the historic building. And, but I don't think that that's achieved here because the buildings on, on Sterling are so big that all we get are these little, you know, cat ears on top. And they're, and I don't even know what that's all about. Like, what, you, you don't read them as a part, you don't understand those layers. And you also don't understand each, either one is, is kind of about something. So I'm afraid that I would need, I, I feel like there's more work to be done. I tend towards the previous kind of feel and language. But as I'm saying, the, the new approach that you're proposing here of the two layers is interesting to me. It just needs to be further, you know, more legible and, and and it may mean that you'd have to lose some height on the Sterling Street side.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Holford Smith?
Yes, I think that, I find that this is an improvement over the, the previous version, which seemed to be much more of a commercial or even like a sort of school-looking reading of. which seemed to be much more of a commercial or even like a sort of school-looking reading of the building. And this, this does, I think, make it read much more residential. I think, you know, pushing, pushing this corner volume in and lowering the dormers was a very good move in breaking up the massing. I agree that it, it, the ground floor does read like a commercial storefront. More masonry to make it, make it read like those are actual apartments. And the connector between the two buildings, it also feels, still feels a little bit commercial. I'm not sure if it's the height or if it's the amount of glass, but it, that, I think that might need a little more refinement. And I think that the facades that face the school, especially at the ground floor, definitely need some more articulation. It really feels like, almost like it's turning its back on the school, even though it's, even though it's a lot of glass facing the school. I think that, that could use some, some more refinement as well. I think overall, it's a much better approach. And I think moving the, the ramp down to the garage on Sterling is a very good idea.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Chapin?
Yes, I agree that this approach, I think, has made it much more contextual and moved it much more in the direction of an apartment, apartment buildings as opposed to an institutional look or commercial look. I think that the views were very important to me. And, and pushing back the corner and reducing the dormer on the, the corner, I think the, the gap in between the large buildings and the separation from the townhouses also, I think, are all very important in creating more potential views and also helping to break up the mass and helping the buildings not to tower over the townhouse as much. The, some reduction in height, the way that, you know, the buildings have been broken up so that the buildings on the street wall are lower, as was pointed out, than the building across the street, I think, is, is, is good. I think that the material use and the differentiation in the, in the way the materials are used on the two main buildings is, is also very helpful. The thing that I think is most bothersome, as others have stated, is that the, the ground floor does really just read very commercial and does not seem like an apartment house language, basically. And that something needs to be done with that. Obviously, more masonry obviously occurs as the, the obvious way to, to solve that. And just to make it appear more like a traditional apartment house entrance and, and windows at the ground floor. The middle, as Commissioner Holford Smith just pointed out, also perhaps needs some work to, although it's a nice view corridor, it, it may not really, you know, the language may, just seems a little off, maybe with the rest. As far as the massing, I think it, it's improved in the way it's presented. And obviously, it was stated that it was reduced by ten thousand a square feet. Possibly, it's, the buildings do, as one of the other commissioners noted, do seem to be still rather massive. And perhaps it's a matter of trying to, there's some changes in the front to just break up the appearance of the massing more by a little more variation. There, there's a variation between the two large areas, which is achieved in part by that central, you know, recessed area. But you wouldn't want to duplicate that, I think, but because you're trying really to, to make the two buildings look very different, which I think they've done a, a lot to achieve. So possibly a little bit more to try to articulate the fronts in a way that would, would further, you know, break up the massing, would help with the issue which some people are having with that. But in general, I think it's, it's really, you know, it's, it's really gone a, really a long, long way to addressing all of the concerns we had. And, and as I said, my primary concern is the ground floor and maybe something to try to further improve the, your perception of the massing.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Goldblum?
Thank you. It was a really interesting conversation about this very interesting project. For me, it, it kind of, I mean, it really, it's been a, you gotta give lots of credit to, to Morris for completely disassembling his previous scheme and really rethinking it. I, I think that it's an example for, at least to, to my eye, of a much less ambitious, modern, interesting design in place, it, it being replaced by a much more contextual, modest, modest design, I think is the right word. And I think that's appropriate in this setting. I agree with many of the things that the commissioners have already said. The setting of, the setting back of this building that we're seeing here, the removing of the driveway was very, very successful, I think, in maintaining the campus experience from the street. I think that the end building, the gabled building, the reduced dormer is fine. The general articulation is fine, the roof material is fine. The middle building is also, I think, appropriate in scale and in detail. I agree with the other commissioners about looking at the base and, you know, looking across the street and seeing how typical New York City residential, fully residential apartment buildings meet the ground. The maze net idea can be accommodated within that, I think. But I think that the idea of adding more masonry, kind of having the proportions to be more reflective of residential scale is appropriate. I think that the, the connector building, I, I personally kind of like it. It does have a, a little bit of a strict classicism nineteen thirties feel to it that bespeaks a kind of federal or governmental quality. But I, I don't mind it. I, I think it's consistent with the rest of the architecture. I think you could improve it if you eliminated the glass and made it a colonnade, but that's really a design decision. And I think that from the point of view of creating the campus, creating the views to the landmark, I think it's effective, whether it's glazed or not. I think that the, the biggest concern that I've heard from others and that I share is the height of, of the ensemble. I don't think that the middle building is a problem, but I do think that the end building, the one that is furthest from us in this image, is a floor too tall. And I think that if that building were reduced by a floor, you would see a transition down in scale that would parallel what's happening across the street and that would transition better to the residential buildings further east, I believe. You could leave a, a portion of that top floor as a setback, significantly setback element, perhaps. But I think that the general perception of the easternmost building as being a five-story building instead of a six-story one would significantly improve its relationship to the context. I think that Adi's comments about the back of the building are important. And the, the relation from back to front, I think that the, the, the campus quality is perceived from the other side. I guess that's the east, that would be the south side, I guess, left side in this image.
Yeah.
North, okay. So I think that that facade is very important, and we really haven't been looking at it a whole lot. And I think that the, that it does, for me, I mean, maybe as Anne Hoot said, it, it has a lot of similarity to it, which is appropriate in that the building that it's facing is very contiguous and feels like it has a single expression. But I think there's something about it that would probably benefit from a greater focus on the part of, of the design team. I think that what I would suggest, and it's certainly just one suggestion among many that you could take, is for me, it's the density. And I would suggest that the gable, the gable elements have, have an applique feel, whether they were made deeper, made more solid. Something about the gable elements has a, have a tacked-on feel. And I would suggest the applicant look at, at improving their integration into the overall scheme and, and their relationship with the building that they face. But generally, I think it's, it's a very, much improved scheme. And I think it's, it's approvable more or less as, as, as drawn with the comments made.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Devonshire?
Thank you. Could we go back to that, to the previous image that, that shows the gable mass on the corner? There you go. The, the, I am absolutely thrilled by the changes in the, in the gable mass here. I agree with Commissioner Goldblum about the far building coming down a floor or having that top floor set back so that it, there's more of a transition to the row houses. There, there, I'm, I'm troubled mostly by that, that middle building. The connector, I think, is, is fine. I don't have the problem that the other commissioners have with that ground floor. I, I don't think it sends any particular message that we need to be concerned about. The, the issue I have with that, that middle building, I'm, where I'm sitting right now, I'm three blocks from the Ansonia Clock Factory building. And when I look at this thing, it just says "factory building" to me. And, and as a result, I, I think I agree with Diana that even the perception of somehow that facade, that, that broad facade being broken up somewhat, not to, to replicate row houses, but to, to just break up that, that solid mass, that monstrous mass to me, would, would be helpful. That's it.
Okay, thank you. And Commissioner Chen?
Yeah, I just had to agree with so many of the comments. Almost every single commissioner hit on something that, that is valid. I think it's an improvement over the last time by breaking up the masses and preserving the view corridor into the landmark structures, the lowering, the setback. The two Michaels correctly pointed out, besides the facade facing the landmark on the extreme right, where you meet the townhouses, row houses. I think that transition need to be re-study in terms of either a setback terrace or however adjusted. And I also agree with the base. I think the base, and Adi's point about the facade facing the landmark really needs to be studied, the gable and sort of like paced on. But it's a vast improvement over the last time, the reduction in scale. And Commissioner Devonshire and Diana Chapin's comment about the middle building, if we can do the setback, you know, you, you now have a very strong base. You have a middle band. And if you can do a setback, not that I want to play designer, but I think if you set it back, you'll further reduce the massing because as opposed to the building across the street, the apartment across the street. Those are just some suggestion. And also, on this front gable side, the connector side, I think the articulation could be a little bit more refined to study. Just somehow on the elevation, maybe it's the elevation view that makes it look like larger than it appears.
Okay, all right, great. Thank you, everyone. And thank you to the team, to the community members who have continued to send us written comments on the proposal as it's evolved. Thank you to the team for taking our comments last time so seriously and thoughtfully, trying to respond to all of them at once, even if some were, seemed to be suggesting different things. And so I think where we are is that there is a large, largely support for this approach as presented today. But before we can actually get to a place where everyone is comfortable approving it, there are a number of suggestions that have been raised for refinements to it, particularly looking at sort of the overall height and variety, the different pieces, the ground floor, amount of glass at the ground floor, the, and so maybe refinements to the connector and to the north facade that faces the school building itself and the interior of the campus. And so with some more refinements, I think we can bring you back and continue this discussion. And, but I think you're moving in the right direction and hopefully these are refinements that you can make fairly quickly. So we'll see you back as soon as you're ready. And with that, that concludes our day. So thank you, everyone, for participating. I'm glad we had a shorter day today than usual. And we'll see you all next week. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.